Twenty three. Uh, the time is seven twelve P M and this is a council work session. Uh, in attendance is myself, councilor person Bull. We have councilpersons Bruger, Cos, McNamara also in attendance as well as Mayor Suther and uh village planner Eric Fisher. Uh, yeah, there we go. So uh what do we wanna, what do we wanna work session about? Anybody got a hot report uh for their committees to give?
Um, yeah.
Do you wanna do that first? Do you wanna do?
I don't have a hot report. I have a cold report.
She has a, I wanna know what's going on. Um, so I, I can give you guys just like a couple like of our updates.
Yeah, why don't we start there?
Um, so this is gonna boil down to legislation. So you're gonna see a piece of legislation for the survey company. Um, because it is over fifty thousand dollars, we have to go out to council and ask for them to approve it.
This is storm sewer surveying?
Correct. So um if it would've been under fifty thousand, we would not have had to because it's already been in there, but it's over fifty thousand. Unfortunately, we do not have enough members. You're gonna hear this a few times. Um, but unfortunately, we don't have enough members that we can even pass it this week. Um, so now we're gonna have to wait until the end of January before we can get move in on any of it.
Well, hold on.
There are other options to add meetings.
There are other options, right?
Yeah.
So we could, uh Eric, we can have a meeting tomorrow, Saturday, Sunday and knock it out. But that just, and it doesn't have to be more than a ten minute affair.
Is there a couple things?
Yeah.
Cause I, I'm sorry, we all know that how that ends, right? We, we can put a meeting and do it.
Yeah.
How many people do we, I mean, we need what, five? And Jason's gone.
We would need the four of you guys to be in attendance in however we, we could.
So we have enough people.
Well.
No, we need five.
So to, to do it in one meeting?
To waive readings, we need five. Yeah, that's why I said at the beginning, we need five. Jason's out of town. Nikki has already resigned?
Resigned, resigned.
One watched.
Okay, so that, I, that, that was the thing that everyone else knew and I think I saw that too, but I gotta, I don't remember the date.
Yes.
That if we could squeeze one more meeting out of her.
Right. So the options are, like he said, we can add in, we just need twenty four hours of notice. We could do like Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday. And again, you guys would have to determine, cannot be virtual. Um, whether or not we did it here or we could potentially just use thirty seven hundred, the round table. It's still a public meeting. People can still show up.
Is there a reason we need it done before the twelfth?
So, no. Yes and no. Um, we have been waiting for how long and this is gonna push this project another however many weeks behind. Um, and go ahead.
So this is something they could start and just do in the winter because they're just putting things underground and it doesn't matter if it's cold out.
Correct. So this is, yeah, this is to.
Nevermind that way. That was my goofiness.
Right? So this is just.
Just to survey the land to see what the heck's going on and who owns what.
Oh, so this is not, when I said survey, we're talk, and then I said the sewer and it's surveying for the French Strait Sewer. Not cameraing our things that.
Yes, that we could.
I was totally on a different project. I'm like, why is we so good? Like, well, get the cameras in the sewers, guys. It'll be fine.
And then the second part to that is, is if you guys wanted to do that or you guys were willing to do it, there is another piece of legislation that we have already, we already knew was coming, um except once again, it's on the bid schedule or it's on um the bid, but uh, we don't have to put it out to bid. But the body cams and all that stuff, which Chief has been working on, um, he just realized that that has to come to you guys because it's also over fifty thousand. Even though it's already been appropriated and everything, um, nobody was thinking because it was on the bid, on the bid.
The bid, and so, so if it's on the official state bid list, it doesn't, you don't have to bid it. It's an acceptable already. Since it's over fifty thousand.
Correct. They have to approve it.
What?
I, we.
They already approved it. Are you sure they have to approve it?
I'm just gonna tell you that's what, yes, and.
Is that what Jesse said? I'm curious about that too.
So that is what um Jeff said and um Jesse is out of the office right now for a reason and um.
That one doesn't seem to be nearly as pressing though.
No, but if we were gonna do it, we would just do both.
Yeah, we would do, but that makes, that makes sense, but.
Yeah, just do it.
So we could, we could potentially get other stuff done as well if we wanted.
Yeah.
I am certainly available most any.
Is everybody, is anything?
No.
What would you have next week?
I am, I am definitely out of town Saturday.
Okay.
Um, tomorrow night I'm fine.
We should do tomorrow because of.
Twenty eight, twenty four hour post.
Yeah, we have a twenty four hour post.
The point, so I'm not about tomorrow.
Nine P M tomorrow.
Um, Sunday I'd be fine, but before four thirty or after eight.
Your mind can be. What could my game time lady?
Nothing. It's my, it's my gaming group. And we haven't played in like three weeks because of all of blah, blah, blah. And we, I hope so. I can't just be like, I'm out.
What's Monday?
Monday, Wednesday.
Oh, you can't just be like, I'll be back in.
Monday, Wednesday, and then we have the meeting on Thursday to wrap it up.
Well, you do a regular meeting.
Yeah, we have a regular meeting on.
Yeah, so if we did, if we did Monday and Wednesday and then, and then wrapped it up at the regular meeting on the twelfth, it doesn't even slow us down.
Yeah. Okay.
And here's my really quick question. I don't, as he does this, do we have to, we do have to have four even to read it?
You have, well, you have to have the form. Yeah.
Which is four.
Even though one has resigned right now, we still have to keep a six. Okay?
Yeah. Form fine. Yeah, that's correct. You have to have the form for the form. So.
That was a bit, I was, I was.
Yeah, if three, if three people resign, you can't do anything until you replace them.
Right.
Guys, hold on. It might have to be after eight because Adam works, I don't have childcare till after eight cause he works seventy seven.
Just bring, you're gonna be there.
Two kids?
Yeah, I'll watch one.
It'll be, it'll be ten minutes. It'll be, hi, here we are. This is a special meeting. Read the legislation.
Is there a better place we can go?
It takes forty minutes to get them wrestled into a car though.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, is there a place?
Is there a place like?
Where, where is, where would be the best place for you to go? How about we say that way?
The playground.
I can stand in the playground and we can.
I can do it in the playground.
I mean, that's super awkward. Let me see, hold on, let me schedule next.
No, I think it'll be super fun.
I would say something that's absolutely horrible right now.
Would you be able to have a shelter house for that?
But it's gonna be upsetting. It's funny.
True, but you didn't have a shelter house.
Uh, hold on. So wait.
It, it's coming. We just have to vote on it.
Hold on, hold on. Monday and Tuesday? If we do Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, we're good.
No, we only need two.
We only need Monday, Tuesday.
Oh.
Monday and Tuesday.
So Monday, Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday's fine.
What, you have a really rough schedule. What do you, hold on, no, I, I know. Yeah, Monday I can do. I'm off Monday. Um, well, I have an oil change at late morning. I can't imagine that running into the evening.
You have an oil change that might keep, might tie me up till six.
Exactly. They're not gonna keep me there right now. So Wednesday would be tricky if Jason was around that day.
He doesn't work though.
Oh, yeah, nah.
Tuesday?
I need, yeah.
Tuesday or Wednesday. I mean, either one or something like.
So, so Monday, sounds like Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday would be best for me.
Yeah, so Monday, as long as we can stomach it on, on Monday, on Tuesday or Wednesday.
Right. Then the next, the next question is for the, I assume you wanna do it at the offices.
And is that okay that since it's out of the.
It, it is okay. You're, you're.
Even for a council meeting?
I believe it's okay because it's, it's a public meeting. It's a reading. It's accessible to your. The, the question is that building is it, can you get those doors unlocked for the general public? Or you'll have to post someone to make sure they let people in for the general public. That's your only, you gotta think of the challenge.
They're open at least until seven, if not seven thirty.
Okay.
But we can verify.
So, so how would you need seven if you're going at that point?
Is seven too early for you on those two days?
I don't care. I don't matter. It could, it could be whatever. Bedtime's like nine thirty at this point for us. We're.
No, now we're David. David's the one who wanted it as late as possible.
Right, yeah.
We got you taken care of. Yeah, no one cares about me because they assume I can make it.
No, you're next. It's impossible. Cause I, we get off work at seven.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't have, okay, I'll make my work.
Yeah. Possible. So, so just, you'd have to just make sure the doors are, someone needs to be posted by the front door to like.
I mean, worst case, I'll stand out there until.
I, I just don't want this to be, I don't want to seem like super, you know, shady or sneaky, just.
It's.
No, agenda.
I work away there. I mean.
It's not. It's, we don't have enough people to do what we need to do.
Right. And the agenda will actually say, it'll be posted just like normal and it's just, um, I think the biggest thing that I would say, and this is on record too, is when she does the agenda, cause trust me, I'm not, by any stretch, trying to do this. Do you guys just want those two pieces of legislation and slow the, Kiki, I don't want to slow it. You guys know what's on there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe leave the president allegiance off for time.
I, I'm, well, I'm just curious if we, if we can do a special meeting to where there's not, again, I'm not trying to be that person, but to take off set. Can we do a special meeting in a different agenda with no citizen comments and just read legislation?
I believe you can.
Old business, new business.
Right, right. So we don't even need old business and new business. It's just special council meeting.
But I'm.
Okay, okay.
And we put those two items on, we call it to session, we take a.
Roll call.
We take a roll call.
Go to legislation, read.
And we adjourn. Yeah, that's all that's required.
Which is what I'm thinking, like the park isn't a, no, cause it's gonna be dark in the park.
Yeah.
Then just think of this third meeting.
And they have, they have that third reading.
Okay, so it's the next, okay. If it is like that, so we, I guess that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, on Thursday, right? They will have their bite of the apple. They'll have their five minutes in citizens' comments before we read legislation.
And in all reality, that's all they would've had if we had enough members to do it as an emergency.
That's true. That's true.
To, and again, this is.
This actually gives them more notice. And also, in all reality, we're trying to get body cameras on our cops, which hopefully we got some grant money for that and we're not footing the bill entirely, but if we are, we are.
It's not even just that. I don't even know. It's a whole new system.
Gotcha. And then.
And, and maybe what I can do is have Chief, and I know he will be there for the first meeting of the month to explain exactly what it is. Uh, because I would like for him to expla, uh, yeah, I'm not gonna be the one to tell, cause I'm saying body cams and I, it's, it's a whole system.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha, a whole new.
Well, it's like our whole system with a new system.
The whole new monitoring system.
A whole new, yeah.
Cameras on here, cameras there, data storage.
You go to camera.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it definitely does for us.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna have her post. So we are going to set Monday and Tuesday both at eight P M.
Sure.
Okay.
And if, um, special meeting, and then I will make sure she gets the agenda up as soon as possible as well.
Yeah.
So the agenda just shows those two pieces of legislation. That way, again, people can see it.
Yeah. As long as we're, you know, super open for his parade. I know, I know we, I know we tend to be as much as we can. I just.
I know, but at this point, it's.
It will be publicly posted.
I know.
We will, we should work to stream them on the Facebooks just like we stream at the emails.
Yeah. And I, and I, and we can easily say that again, this is to get how, however many houses move, you know, to keep that project moving. Cause it, again, it's more about the, I wanna say health, safety and welfare of the residents, but it really is.
There's ducks swimming in it now. I, I took Dari to the playground. There's like literally ducks swimming in it.
Yes. Okay. Oh, I have.
Yeah.
I have hundreds.
I mean, there's ducks that swim in the field in front of my school too though. So, I mean, that just happens. That's just something that happens over time. You get, you get, uh, you get the ground sinking a little bit in area, water pools there. That, that's part of like, hey, there's land that's been cultivated. Or not, if you get that in the wild.
Okay.
Okay, but I love to do it.
Okay, so that was your, that was.
Yeah, but.
Just think of it as a vernal spring.
Monday, Tuesday, eight P M.
Yes. So that was your update for that. Um, we have a, what we think is may.
That, yeah.
Uh, the water company was called. There's a leak somewhere over on Alder Vista. Um, so the water company is coming out to see if it's ours. Um, if we have a water main break, typically it is covered the first time and then the rest of the year, of course, it happens on the fifth.
Oh, we got two.
It's either one or two.
When is that two?
Yeah, it might be two.
But I mean, I've never seen it in writing, so.
Yeah.
I mean, all those would.
But I know we, we usually don't get, get a bill for at least the first one or two. So, um, so do not even know if it's hers yet or ours. So we should know that tomorrow. Um, and that, again, that was just something that happened today. So, um, I think that was the main things.
Man, they never gave us a free one when I was at the condo.
Man, you're such a like a Debbie Downer today. Well, there's ducks everywhere and we never.
There's ducks everywhere is not a Debbie Downer. It's called a vernal pond and it's an important part of nature. It floods in the spring.
Oh, my goodness. Not in this neighborhood, okay? Not in this.
What's, what's the, uh, summer, uh, tunnel?
There isn't like a similar word for it. December, March, June.
A tunnel for fall, vernal for spring.
Okay, wait, I don't have time for this. Although, we don't have time for this.
Yes. Yeah. Moving on.
To you. So that was just the quick update for that to keep that project moving. So we've got the two pieces of legislation. I don't know what else is on legislation.
Yeah.
Chief will have his report like normal. My contributor will give me his report.
We, we third read everything we had in the pipeline at the last meeting.
Oh, there's a whole list.
Oh, I'm sure there are things coming up, but I haven't gotten a packet on it yet.
How do you not, how do you not?
Yeah, so you can email out on the agenda.
If you're not getting emails, there is an issue because that's not yes for that.
I just. I just check. I will say this, I have been surprised at how few emails I've got.
I think I'm not getting emails.
Yeah.
My last email is twelve four from Nikki Sharest on the shelter house meeting.
Oh, you didn't get the packet?
Because it's, it's for Jersey's there.
I'm.
That's just not for. You didn't get this? Dynatech? Describe it.
That is the last.
Yeah, that, that came. Uh, if it was wrong, the, the, the net line says.
Uh, man, we were so close to. Can't they knock it down a little bit? Can't they give us a discount for forty nine?
But.
I know, I know.
Oh, you know, I have a banner at the bottom saying, please sign into your exchange account.
Can't you, can't you call them and ask?
Oh.
And if, and if that's the thing that I got logged out, I have no idea what my password is.
Why can't the phone be like, yay?
Cause they didn't let me choose mine and it was three years ago and I don't have that calendar anymore.
What's that?
Oh, we, we can find your, we, we can find your.
That's annoying.
Yeah, my last email was December fourth.
I absolutely didn't let me choose mine because I was ready to fire them if they wouldn't.
Yeah, your email's broken.
Oh, yeah. Dollar signs, pound signs, capital this, lowercase that. I know what mine is too.
Yeah.
I would.
Before, before the last exchange upgrade that they did, they were literally just assigning passwords.
Yes.
And, and I said, well, wait a second. Then whomever assigned me that password, it was my password.
Knows my password. Right.
How is that secure? Oh, let's just, no, no. And I, I went, I went toe to toe with them. I was ready to fire them. I know you were.
Okay, well then I haven't just not been replying to things. I just haven't received any emails in a month.
Well, you actually had peace and quiet. That's all that's funny.
Yeah, it's, it's been a month since I got any emails. I just thought, I'm like, oh, it's the holidays.
Oh, you didn't get that email?
I haven't had, my last email was twelve four.
Hold on.
Which email?
I do think that if you.
I don't, no.
If I log out.
You will see, you will be sure.
I will check it. I'll check on my laptop when I get home.
You didn't get twelve twenty three? You didn't get this?
Twelve, twelve twenty three is after twelve four. My last email I have received was twelve four.
You wanna, you wanna borrow so you can see?
You have no, you have, you should read this.
Yes.
Yeah, you could. Well, that's that email. I don't have that. I have the agenda. Let me know what you want.
No, you should read that first. This is more important. Um, I was thinking, can we get some signs up?
Okay. Signs for what?
I like some signs.
Signs for what?
The kids playing signs that we talked about that we never really.
You guys have to like decide what you want, where you want them, design them, and do all of that.
It's, okay.
Design, I know.
And how many we order because this is gonna be, because it's not as easy as you think. So, because I have signs.
Yeah.
And it is not as easy as you think. So determining the snow removal ordinance, um, and the reason that I'm bringing it to you guys is because it's not as easy as you think.
Damn.
So the way that we originally did it was snow removal ordinance, no parking after two inches of snowfall, but that's actually not correct. So technically, if, well, it's, that's what our, that's what our ordinance is, but obviously people aren't gonna be like, see the sign and then go Google the ordinance.
How do you know?
So, but it's also, I thought, well, let's do it as snow, you know, snow removal ordinance, um, no parking if we're under a level two. But technically, the ordinance says that I have to declare it or Chief has to declare it. So do we write it as Franklin County level two? What do we wanna put on these signs? Because the issue is, we have a lot of people that did not move their cars under this last snow. Um, we have posted it. We have done all of that. Um, so we thought, let's just either, we had the two options. Let's put big ones at the end of the entrance, all of the entrances and then maybe one or two throughout some other areas, um, highly traffic areas. Or do we do just like a whole bunch of little ones? So obviously the big ones are double the price of the little ones. Um, but let's just be honest, you can't put them every fifty feet because, eh, let's see.
That's a lot of signs and people will hate it.
That's a lot of signs. People will hate it and it's extremely, it, it becomes extremely expensive. I wanna say twenty was like a thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, that was. Yeah, that's, that's why, that's why I said a lot of signs.
And there's no where twenty doesn't even put one on each street.
Yeah.
Is the easy answer that we just follow Franklin County snow emergency and when they're level two, we're a level two and.
Yeah.
But the, that's not with the ordinance.
I know, we have the.
But we, we just, we just changed your, so.
Yes. And we sort of that.
And yeah, well, we can, we.
We still have time.
We still have snow season, uh, for our.
I'll read this later. Your husband's texting you, which really weirded me out. So like, husband Cos?
We can make sure that everything in the snow season.
And why is someone asking you about bats?
And we, you know, remind people every time it's snow, you know, if Franklin County calls a level two, get your car off the road.
Newsletter.
And actually ours doesn't say that. Ours says level one. It goes into effect.
Well, even better.
So, yes, our snow, cause um, we actually, oh, at such times as the National Weather Service indicates two inches or more of snowfall had fallen, it's the blah, 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 blah. When the mayor or chief of police at their discretion declares an emergency, win a level one. So there's multiple things. This is ours. That's why she printed it.
That, that actually sounds like it kicks in automatically with the. Uh, in order to facilitate the clearing of streets and expedite safety, free flow of vehicular pedestrian traffic during periods of heavy snowfall.
So the weather officials, what do you guys want signs for?
More vehicles shall not be parked on streets. One, at such times as the National Weather Service indicates two inches of snow have fallen. Uh, there is prospect of further snowfall or ice accumulation. Done.
Yeah.
Right? When the mayor at their discretion declares an emergency, that's a second option. Or three, when a level one or greater snow emergency has been declared by Franklin County Sheriff.
So you need all.
So do you?
You don't need to, all three.
So I guess my question is, do you want it?
Those are, I, I heard oars there.
Do you want it just to say?
Yeah, there are some oars.
Snow removal ordnance, or, you know, um, snow ordinance, um, no parking or?
I, I don't even think we need the signs. I think we just start ticketing people.
That would be, that would be preferable. I think, I think you'll have to, I think you should have Chief apply on, on, you know, logistically what they wanna do in that situation.
Yeah.
Or do you want to put one in each ordinance that basically says we, you know, remind, I don't wanna put reminder, but yeah, I, I think that's where, how many signs do you guys want?
Well, we'll halt the guests. We do have people that come visit, like when this last visit, there's a lot of people visiting because of the holidays.
Correct.
And they don't know, right? And so ticketing, the residents, you wanna, it's, it's difficult, right?
That's not ticketing.
I know, I know.
Ticketing, what my husband Ray wants?
I lived, I lived in a town that had no overnight parking and they didn't take it. They towed.
They towed, that's right.
And then tow residents, they would tow guests, they would.
I know. So it all depends on how the council wants to proceed with that, right?
Or can we just do no parking during snow emergency? End of story.
Yeah.
I, I literally am goofy.
For, for the sign, no parking during snow emergency.
Yeah. I'm Googling like New York City snow removal sign. Just, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Google somebody around here like Columbus or whatever, whatever there's says.
Ticket or tow.
Yeah, just do it. And then five million dollar fine and then it's fine.
Can't do that because then you have to do it.
Well, my owners will be ticketed and or towed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five million dollars.
Yes. We're gonna tow your car floor so you can, cause clearly that's where we need to be. No kidding. That was not fair enough. That was not politically correct. Okay, so that was all I had for that. Um, I just wanted to see, so as far as signs go, um, the way that it pretty much works is in your committee or individually or however you wanna do it, you basically come and say, okay, these are the signs we want. We want, you know, slow down. We want no party, you know, no whatever, whatever it is. So if you, you know, Google a couple of different ones, you determine exactly where you want them. We can have them installed. Um, but you get it to us and then we order them from, um, we have like three different places that we, uh, are tax exempt from. So we, you know, you just, you gotta decide what. Trust me, it is not as easy as you think because you remember like the font and this and that, and it was a battle between the council people and like, I mean, it was just, it was.
Well.
That was just for the basketball court sign.
I don't know that this, this kind of is a little.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I don't think that, I don't recall that as being anything of a fight other than I think this, well, I think that, okay.
Well, I, I'm more dramatic than you.
And then all you. Well, yeah, and then all you do is make a choice. You say, okay, you've spoken, you've spoken. It's A or B, let's vote.
And then I did. And then I did.
Okay, three people like A, two people like B, and one person says, I don't care. A's got it.
Yeah. There you go.
It's, it's not hard.
No, so if you wanna.
It's just representative democracy. You just, you get an idea, you see who wants it, you move on.
Exactly. Just like the playground mulch that I wanted, but I didn't want Brian one. You're gonna tell me this some.
Wait, did you want the rubber mulch?
I did. Brian did it. And we're gonna be, I'm bitter. I'm still bitter.
You're still, okay, let me tell you something. We have rubber mulch in our front, whatever thing. It's the worst thing ever because it is so light. And every time you try to blow leaves out of there, the whole thing just, oh.
No, that's not what they're talking about. The stuff we were gonna play, and the problem is it's much more expensive. It's the stuff you have, but it's turned into plywood. So basically it's layer of your stuff adhesive, another layer of your stuff adhesive, another layer of your stuff adhesive.
Oh, yeah.
It comes up to be like a solid thing. If you go to the new park.
Like the recycle shoes thing?
The park up past Inniswood, a couple of the Westerville parks, but the park past Westward.
The park in. Has it.
Has it.
The park right on.
Yeah.
And it's like a thick rubber, but it's really expensive. It would've cost a lot of money. We never would've had to do anything, but yeah.
It's cause of.
No, seriously, that's what I have. It's the worst.
With the environment, I wanna use to vote. Oh, yeah.
But it's, is this okay? Okay.
So anyway, that's how I understand it. You're gonna tell me this some.
That's, that's all you need to do that on.
Why you, slow down kids playing?
Uh, okay, so I have like this, we'll work on that. And then, um, that's all I have. And so I don't know if you guys, do you guys wanna go through? Okay, so on the agenda is going to be, um.
Well, we have, we have the agenda, right? So we can, but we can actually go through the legislation.
Yeah, go through the group real quick.
But before we do that.
No, I was staying at the top.
Oh, wow.
Um.
On the appointment?
If everybody, you know, wants to keep their same committees, which I know I was here.
Yeah.
I'm for our agenda.
Hey, Brian, can you jump on there and forward the, the uh, meeting packet to Mark Bruger at Hotmail?
At AOL dot com.
Hotmail.
Don't make fun of, I saw the common survey email address for the record.
Mark Bruger.
All one word, nothing fancy. I got it way back to the beginning.
I have something to bring up, uh, about the pool, cause Jason's not here.
Yeah.
Just remind me. I don't know what order we're going in. I.
I actually saw someone with an AOL.
My aunt still has an AOL.
My father-in-law has an AOL.
And, and it was like just a random person I made conversation with the tire shop and I didn't like, anybody else, I would've made fun of them. But I felt like I don't know this person at all and I shouldn't make fun of them.
See, I got made fun of just for having a Yahoo because recently. Who, who has Yahoo? Like, it's all Gmail.
My all.
Yeah.
I got an AOL father-in-law.
Uh, yeah, cause anybody, so A, we need to figure out the services committee that we created.
Yes.
And who's on that. And yeah, hold on. And it, and the general makeup of all the committees now goes ahead.
Should we wait until we have a new person?
That's what I was gonna come around is that we're gonna have a new person by the end of January. I don't think anything, I don't think the wheels are coming off if we wait until, you know, the January twentieth meeting, uh, to, to committees.
Does anyone have an issue with people continually functioning with their current?
That's fine.
Because Jason's planning on having a meeting, um, because pool fees still need to be done.
Yeah, I, I think we just go like normal. No one change. Until we get our sixth person and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can have that conversation with whomever that may be.
Okay.
I think that's the plan.
Okay.
Uh, so there's that. There's also this first meeting, we are supposed to nominate and elect a council president. I will tell you, I would not like to be council president this year.
Okay.
I'm looking to be like that.
That's okay, cause I will be council president this year as probably.
Mark's through inside of the ring.
I think Jason is interested in Mark. So I think whoever.
Okay, so just, well, so here's the thing.
Not as of yet.
If, uh.
Uh, Jason just got on council, so he can wait till next year when I'm gone.
That's fine.
I was gonna say, next in the rotation would be me.
Well, if you want it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, if, if we were going in such direction.
Just remember, I go on vacation. So you guys actually, you, you gotta be ready to do some.
Well, at least.
And then you will have to. You never have to.
You only have to die, like, cause on vacation, or you have to step in, huh?
Yeah.
Or incapacitate.
Or can't you know, or can't get a flight back to Mexico.
I don't know. Would that be enough to trigger, trigger? I would know that that would be enough to trigger it. I mean, we don't have like a twenty five.
I mean, and even so, I mean, the worst would be you preside over the council meeting, which you would just be doing everything.
Make some, make some papers, yeah.
Which has never happened in my experience, yes.
Yeah.
Nor did it happen in any of Lena's time as far as I'm aware. So we're up to.
No, because everything can usually wait twenty four hours. And if not, there's something called electronic signatures now.
Yeah.
They're great. Which we don't, I will say, we do not use unless it's absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that's been done once in three years.
All right. So we have that. Uh, Mark, did you get my email yet?
Yes, I did. I have it all now.
And other than that, we should just redo the.
We will be doing planning and zoning as well. You're still on planning and zoning cause that lasts for four years. Uh, but we will be doing the appointments for, um, the same, the, the goal is going to be that we will be reappointing the two that are expired.
Yeah.
Uh, we've just had a lot of turnover. So the plan would be just, we are pretty positive. I know last year I did Brady, so I am pretty positive it's the two new. Which we, do we actually, even though they haven't been there, it is a new year. So I assume we need to.
We confirm, yeah.
Okay.
The Brady was already confirmed with the other two.
So yeah, we will just reconfirm those. And then we were also, um, Eric was talking about, you know, what to do for the non-voting if we need to.
I think we're good there.
We're good, we're good there. So.
These are about moved up the town or something.
So that will also just be brought up and just so, cause our next meeting.
We should throw an actual agenda item on there for all of that. So it doesn't.
Well, and that was what, is it, is there something where we put?
Is it there? You have it on there. You have something.
We just have like.
Appointments of Beth McFarland. Okay, yeah, it is there. Okay. I had, I only looked that there was a page. I didn't actually read it all. Uh, yeah.
So that's all we're gonna, that's all our plan is for that. Um.
So that's good. Then let's review the legislation on the agenda and then see what's going on.
All right. Looks like our top one is pool things, which will get talked about, I'm sure on the, is it the next Monday meeting Jason has?
Yes, uh, on the twenty third.
Okay, so that'll be after that. And we're still looking at possible discounts from PCA members. Um, I wouldn't necessarily be in far favor of that. And it's a work session, so it's the time to say it. Uh, I don't, I'm in favor of.
They actually, they talked about a lot of different discounts and a lot of different potential things and like the logistics of all of that. I don't think any of them were completely, you know, there were, there were discussions of, and I know Jason's not gonna be here, so I, um, I won't stick on this for a really long time. The MPCA thing, I think one of the more difficult things would be how to prove.
How to validate.
How to validate, who's responsible.
How to validate it. Also, it's just, hey, join the MPCA. You can do the carriage ride. You get discounts at the pool. That just means we're subsidizing their membership drive. And I like MPCA. I really do. My wife's been very active in it. I have set up and torn down more kids' parties than you can count on one hand, probably less than two hands, but I've only lived here for six years. Um, but I don't know that we need to subsidize their membership drive.
So that was, that was one of the discussions. Um, and here's where I'm at. When it comes to discounts and things like that, I, I kinda stayed out of some. So that was, that was one of the discussions. Um, and here's where I'm at. When it comes to discounts and things like that, I, I kinda stayed out of some of that. There was discussion of, um, low-income families, um, in the village that could potentially get like a.
Oh, I'm okay for a free and reduced thing based on income and poverty level.
There's, yeah, there was. Mm-hmm. Um, but again, here's who is responsible for that, how do we maintain that? Is that can be Barb's responsibility to figure out who approves, who doesn't approve. Um, do you do it based on if they have free or reduced lunches at school? It does add another layer of different things. Again, it's not that it's,
Yeah.
and then you have the people that might be trying to do it to get a discount that maybe shouldn't get it, and is that a bad thing? Is that a, again, I'm not advocating either way.
So here's the thing with the reduced pool thing, unless it was drastically reduced, you're gonna have to, they're gonna have to fill out the stack of paperwork saying, I can't afford this, and then turn it in, so they serve thirty dollars. They're just not gonna get a pool membership anyway.
Well, that was, that was where, at the end of the day, that was my theory. A lot of people that are, you know, struggling, the last thing that they're concerned about is pool membership.
Yeah.
Um, in, in, in the grand scheme of things, maybe I'm wrong, but maybe it's not the people that are, I don't know.
The easiest way to determine that is if they, they already have a card for their subsidized food.
Right.
Oh, well, yeah.
And it's a snack part, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, that may, then it's not a thing. It's just like, no, really, I have this. Can I get the thing when I, when I sign up?
Here, here's my EBT. Obviously, I qualify for assistance of some way.
Run the do all paperwork.
Yeah, and I, I actually think that's a good idea, and I do think that, uh, you know, I definitely talk to families that have used the pool because it is actually a really inexpensive, nice thing. Like, when you, when you have a family that's there all summer, when you average out, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Your per hour expense, it gets really affordable really fast.
Oh, I say that all the time.
And there are, there are families, like I, I go for years, there was a girl and her mom, and they walked.
They are still, they still come. I know exactly where you're talking about.
Well, I know. Yeah, but they, but they're walking from south of the village, like, south of Waltham or whatever.
Correct.
And they walk to the pool every day all summer, and I'm, I'm guessing that it's because it's a really affordable way for them to do something.
At a family of four, at two hundred and seventy dollars, what we're proposing, that's what, you know, seventy dollars a person, and if you use it sixty times, cuz you're coming every day, that's a dollar a day to go to the pool.
Right.
I mean, per person.
Yeah, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't like poo-poo like.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're right. You're right, I was wrong.
No, it, it goes to, who's gonna be responsible to figure it out? Who's gonna do this or that? Who's gonna verify that the name on the EBT card is the person that's actually applying? Who's, you know, there's, there is still a lot more that goes into it. What if, you know, the husband lives over here, but now the wife is using it, now you got three fam. There is logistics to it, whether or not we care about those logistics, maybe we don't care.
There is, but you know, you, you have to come in person, so you could say, here's my thing, here's me, and I'm gonna sign off.
Right, if you're driving, what's it, you know.
And then all it is, cuz all it is, is a point of sale. It's a point of sale, oh, well, then you owe me a hundred and seventy dollars instead of two hundred. Here's a hundred and seventy.
But then. Yeah.
Here's your pass, you're on the list. Now we don't think about it.
Ever again.
Ever again.
Then there is the possibility of doing payment plans, um, for people to also help with people that potentially can't pay it all at once. So then, so all I'm saying is, we're throwing a lot of ringers into a lot of different things, and if we start, and I'd just like to remind everybody that we have part-time employees, and.
Well, that's why, of all of these, the extended payment, cuz I like, we can do whatever. Show us this, show us this. Okay, here's your money.
Just remind them. Right.
Here's your receipt, boom, you have it. Now we don't care about you, other than showing up with your thing.
It squares the means. So the new system that we have, the pool system, helps with a lot of that and tracking it. Um, they can't use the pool until it's paid for, and I, and we don't need to turn this into a, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, reduced, we never really discussed how reduced. Um, they had talked about maybe like a sliding scale, but if you start doing sliding scales, again, who's gonna be responsible to figuring out whether you get fifty dollars off point? I'm not saying that we can't do it, I'm just saying that's on you guys, um, to make those decisions. So there, those were the things that were tossed around. Monday, the twenty-third, they will probably continue that conversation and stuff if he wants to come to that. Um, what was, what else was? So there was a lot with pool.
Yeah.
That I think, like you just said, the MPCA.
The birthday party thing they wanna put on there.
Yeah, please direct a different kinds of pool, like, you know, slide, drop out.
Um, if somebody decided to rent it for the whole day, again, just renting it for two hours in the middle of the day and shutting the pool down, that may just be something that we, you know, I'm just gonna throw me under the bus for that. Um, if we allow people to rent it for the whole day, we might do something to where it must be determined before the pool season starts, and we start selling memberships. So if somebody wants to rent it for July thirtieth, and they want it for the whole day, you have to do it sixty or ninety days in advance, which we really haven't publicized that. Um, but just getting away from, you know, I, I don't wanna say a stick-it-to-me type thing, and then people, you know, saying, well, I tried to rent it for four hours and the mayor wouldn't let me do it type thing. They wanna do, they, and I'm just putting that on the record. They would like to have something in writing, can we do it or can't we do it? It's, again, we may not do it at all. Um, so they were talking about getting something firm that if you wanna rent it for the whole day. That way we can publicize it a little bit more.
There you go. So I think, I think the final thought on this is that this is on a second reading on Monday.
Correct.
So the second regular scheduled council meeting of the month is the twentieth.
There's gonna be a.
But that meeting that you're talking about isn't until the twenty-third. So why not tabling this?
No, it's after.
No, the second, uh, council meeting's the twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's so like, that's why we wanted to get this, because of, we're wasting a whole month, almost, that's, yeah.
Yeah, 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 perfect. Yeah, 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 that's what.
So it, it's gonna be discussed before then. So I highly recommend, if you're able to come to that meeting, everybody knows, I think the pool is super important, and there's a lot to determine, and um, you know, I may not agree with certain things that we're doing, but you guys are five to six people that at least we can figure out what's best for the residents, so.
The twenty-third, be there?
Twenty-third, and that way you can talk about the MPCA or what other ways, you know, what other ways we can talk support.
I might, cuz for the most part, since I just don't care about the pool, to be honest, and never use it. I, well, no. So I know people who are very interested and know the people there. I will let them hash it out, cuz I'm like, I don't know, it's the pool, the wife likes it.
Well, I, and again, you know.
I go, I go for wine and cheese and family fun night, and that's the pool. That's my pool season. Wine and cheese, family fun night.
And then determining, I asked, um, MPCA to give me some of the dates and times for that, so we can get that established before we start selling memberships, because last year we backed up a little bit on the family fun night and made it a little bit longer, which I have no, but again, just so we can publicize it to where people aren't mad. Um, the Pride, um, event is also, they are trying to maybe do it a little bit longer this year. Again, it would just be nice to let people know that are getting a pool membership, that the pool is gonna be, maybe not be available that day.
Yeah.
So that was, that was my thing, the twenty-third. We'll be discussing it.
Next up, um, is just confirming Peter Ferguson is a full-time officer.
That one we're gonna put on legislation too, cuz we actually, if we're gonna make those extra meetings, let's get that done.
Right, wonder.
Cuz that's also declaring, well, that is, yeah, that's a first reading.
Yes, so we'll do it the same way.
Yeah, so we'll do that on, we'll do that Monday, Tuesday, and then it can be a further.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, cuz I wasn't even gonna talk about it if it wasn't for that, cuz it's.
No, and had we done it, um, we would've, and this came from Jesse, um, a while back, because they started not doing it this way, and Jesse said, no, he is an officer, he needs to, um, we need to get the paperwork done. This is, he's still on probation for the six months, this is just the first reading for, um, us hiring him. So, or this is just the first piece of legislation, then we come back to you at six months. So this needs done, uh, we will do that on the legislation as well.
Gotcha. We're at twenty-three oh two, the transfer of funds and declaring an emergency. Um.
Talk to me and I'll tell you what it is.
Yeah, to transfer three hundred and fif, three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the general fund to the storms who were improvement, and a hundred and fifty from the general fund to the pool improvement.
That's just the transfer that we had talked about for the, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you told, you told me to tell about you. I don't know about you.
Biden rolls.
Yeah.
I remember you trying to shore up the boot lump, so that, that makes sense to me.
Yes. I mean.
Yeah, it's related to the Jordan Road project.
Yeah. Um, twenty-three oh three, the county treasurer to provide advanced payment of taxes and other sources payable to the village as they become available during the twenty-twenty-three, and to declare an emergency. This is, we do this every year, don't we? We say Franklin County, give us our money when you get it, not when it's convenient for you.
And I will verify if that needs to go on the list, cuz it doesn't sound like, I don't know if that's, he said emergent, were they trying to leave readings on that?
That, not that I see, well, it says first reading and then no time for the second, third.
If it is, I will get that on the list as well. The ones I'm not doing is the maintenance building and the shelter, you know, the shelter. Those are not going on this list. We are not trying to, no, I'm not.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, please, can we? That would be awesome.
No.
I'm so not, not a chance in this world.
It would be.
Disaster.
I would bring marshmallows.
I am not doing it.
No, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
I would bring marshmallows to heat up on their torches.
And here's why, I, and, and in fairness, I would like for Jason to be here to be able to vote as well, because I.
Oh, of course. We're not gonna do this, we're not gonna do, neither of those two, would I be comfortable necessarily even passing it until we get a full council. Cuz they're big, long-term things.
That's what I'm saying. I missed one vote in my first run of council, and I missed it because I was on vacation, and it's the only vote that I felt went not the way it should've.
And the one that he cared about more than any of the one.
And my vote may be different, so if you wanna say you don't take vacation, that's just what it is.
I do, I take it, so I'm not that.
All right, moving on, so that is what that is. No, I'm confused, does it, oh, it was the tax, hey, Franklin County, give us our tax money as soon as you get it. Um, twenty-three oh four, directing the mayor, and if we do have to pass it as an emergency, does anyone have a problem with, if our fiscal officer's like, I'd really like to have that in hand, so I can.
Getting our money now that it's bothering me all year.
Yeah. Uh, directing the mayor to pay bid documents, organize public bidding, evaluate responsive bids, someone jump up and run around, the thing went out. For construction of a maintenance building on village-owned property.
So that is again, just, yeah, just so we can start the, the process to get it out, you know, figuring out what we need to do, giving it out to bid, getting it up to you guys.
Yep. Yeah, this is nothing. This is just like, we want a building that's three thousand square feet. Do they wanna have an idea of what to do?
This is just. No, and that may, we have three readings. So this is just to get this started in front of you. That number may change.
Yeah.
Did we ever reach out to the other properties that we have discussed?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
And again, we have village-owned property listed in there, um, that's current. So, um, if we want to adjust the legislation, this is just the legislation, because Mike is gonna start working on it as soon as we get to that point. This is just first reading. So we have another work session between now and then.
And this is, this is, it looks like, from what I'm reading on this, this is just to organize and start. There's, there's absolutely nothing about where it's even gonna be, how big, it's like, we wanna know what it would take to build a three thousand square foot thing, we're gonna have to get some bids and talk to people.
Yeah, well, like preparing bid, bid documents is.
The current location that the plan is for is overall, is the Maplewood. And that, I would say that that is.
The Maplewood corner. I can't think of a better place for it, and I live.
I remember, which was the last time we had this conversation, there was, uh, at least a one property that was exciting upon Cleveland.
A stone's throw from it.
Yeah.
The car lot.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And so I was just curious.
So we have forty-five more days that we can just make sure that's still not done. But that's something.
Also, I think the.
I think that's very important.
I think the, other than you wouldn't have to necessarily build thing, but I don't know how big the interior of that building is, is that seems like an exciting property for something that's not shit, not just.
Can we talk to you about what you, sorry, though? Or you want to pull that down?
Or call.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see how that's better for maintenance shed than down there. I think that could be better for, uh, whatever, whatever.
Like access is great.
I can actually, yes, resident maybe around it, and eyesore type thing would probably be.
Yeah.
There were, there were some upsides. I was, it was the last number. The last, we liked it, there was, when we, it, yeah, the ask was to investigate, right?
Was it truly?
Yeah.
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 The investigation could come back that, you know, to buy would be expensive, and so.
Or not, not, period, yeah.
Yeah.
But we, we at least need that.
And my point is, that Maplewood corner is close to the geographic center, it's close to all the heavy, the long, long wards.
Okay, we already talked about it.
It's territory, not.
There's lots of roads. Yeah, I would agree, Cleveland Avenue's further out of the way, it's, you know, it's, it's, the other location's great, but again, you're outside.
Yeah.
My thing is.
Yeah.
But. I think if tho, if you had to, I think those are two great options.
Yeah.
That at least we can explore outside the pool, because the pool is just not, I mean, it's not ideal, it's not where I love it, and there's too much of.
Yeah. Yeah.
But my thought is, once, once you start preparing bid documents, you are far enough down the, far enough down the path that
Yes.
you have selected a location, and you're not even prepared to bid documents and say, oh, wait, that car place.
Well, this is also so we get our rear ends moving, because I know that people are starting to get a little nervous because they only have to tax them out.
Yeah, you can use some blanks and.
Yes.
You know, but the documents are, are fairly template-ish.
What I'm saying is, I wanna know all the information before we proceed with something, and then have to backtrack and make a lot more work for ourselves.
Yeah.
So I think it would be really important to get all the information as soon as possible. Thank you.
Nice as well.
All right, on to twenty-three oh five. Uh, this is to put out bids for a shelter house, uh, there across from the basketball court. I know, it says parcel one-one-one-three, blah, 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 reserve H. It's that parcel's land across the street from the basketball.
And he added that, just so you know, Jesse had done the leg, or Jesse had put together the legislation force with the information that was given to him. Um, but it actually just said over, I don't know exactly what it originally said. I made it super specific, so nobody would question the intent, because that is the intent. The intent is to put it exactly where, I didn't want anybody to read this legislation and go, oh, they're trying to be shady, but, here you go. They're trying to be shady by not putting exactly where they're gonna pass it, and then all of a sudden, it's gonna go right here.
Yeah, well, I wasn't gonna read it without saying, like, uh, if it wasn't there, or in fact, with that crazy number there, which does no one even go to, I am going to read it the same way I just read it now in the work session and say, that field across from the basketball.
Exactly, and we put reservation there because that is exactly how it is listed, that parcel number, because if, if it's on the other side of the basketball court, that is a different parcel number.
Yeah.
So I wanted to make sure that it was a specific, but you might wanna check me on that, cuz I did this for the honor.
Gotcha. Um, and I don't know, do we wanna?
Parcel, um, parcel number and reserve H.
Parcel. Um, maybe H, yeah, Maggie J.
That's why I wanted you to check it, cuz it says H on the date.
H, H, okay.
Yeah.
But I wanted to, okay.
And it definitely says H on the, on the legislation.
Oh, I put H, cuz that's what it said on the map, that I was looking at. But we needed, I just, we had plenty of time, this was just the first reading.
Yeah.
Just make sure though.
See, I should.
No intent of emergency waving rating, obviously. I don't have any intent. You guys can do what you wanna do. That's the way it's.
Yeah.
I'm not doing that about the election.
Yeah, that's the way that it's, it is presented. And this is also, again, I'm not gonna do this in another meeting, this is to either get it done
Yeah.
That's the best way.
or shut them on it.
Yep, very.
Because there is no other location at this point in time that is desirable, that we would, there's too much going on at the pool. We obviously would not do it over in front of the community building now or probably ever. This is over.
Can't we do it over on that flood plain that's hard to get to in the corner of the property, you know, the swamps?
Yes. Um, we're just gonna put, like, pitch a tent right there. We're just gonna put a, um, we're just gonna put some stakes in the ground and a little, we're just gonna do that, and so.
So that is still up there? My parents have a ten-by-ten pop-up, they're probably getting rid of, I'll bring that back this, this weekend.
I did meet with the residents. What's that?
My parents have a ten-by-ten pop-up that I don't want, I'll bring that down. We can, we can have a whole tent city there.
Bring that down, we'll do it. Um, I did meet with the residents that are directly next door and had a really good meeting with them, um, winter or a lot of stuff with them. I'm not gonna go in detail, that's something that we can do at a later time. But, um, I did express that we would continue to be forward exactly the way that we are. Um, you know, they expressed their, you know, their, their concerns. They expressed some of the things that they would like to see. Um, I obviously did not overpromise anything, because I don't make those decisions, um, but did tell them that it would be going in front of you guys if, in, in January. So I have never been bashful about that, but I've always said that it was going in front of you guys in January.[1616.04] So I have never been bashful about that, but I've always said that it was going in front of you guys in January, and I said it.
Yeah, and part of the seventy-five thousand would also be.
Electric.
Well, yeah, and all that, but um.
This is the official recording plan, so, so you can see right there, that's, that's J all the way down here, with that that funeral. We could split this, you know, and do this, but H is.
Okay, cause it's, this is basketball here.
That's right.
So we're putting it over here.
Yeah, that's right, so you're H on the north side.
Okay, so H is right.
Okay.
And part of your uh discussion with them was there any talk about any sort of barrier, natural or artificial, between their house and the shelter?
So we had talked about, um, you know, the potential of fences and not anything specific, you know, we had talked about fences, they didn't love the idea of having a fence right there, because they love being able to just cut through.
How about trees?
And so we had talked about trees, we had talked about a couple of different things, um and at the end of the day, I mean, here's what I'm gonna say, obviously I can't spend thirty, fifty, eighty thousand dollars just on a barrier. Um but, I mean, we would work with them, these are, this is option A, this is option B, which would you prefer to see? Um so we could talk about that a little bit, um but again, they, you know, I will say that, you know, they're, they're not gonna be thrilled about, they would prefer to see something like, um, a garden, and maybe like a um bench type thing, um I had even talked about, you know.
Have you asked them to walk around the corner to the merry yo's garden and bench?
Yeah, so, well, no, I mean, again, it's the, it's their home, it's what's right next to our.
Yeah, and it's what they want to have next to them that they look at and is, and is break.
Right, and they, you know, they were not expecting, um you know, I'm sure MI wasn't upfront, I I was told that MI told them it was never gonna be anything, that's what I was told that they were told, um.
So.
And, you know, a sales pitch or whatever, and I said, well, I'm, I'm here to tell you that this is our, one of the easiest usable windows.
Yeah. That unoccupied, undeveloped city lot next to your house, I'm, that will, we will never build on it.
And I think, you know, and this is me saying this with that, and then I'm done, um I think if we put thirty thousand dollars worth of playground equipment, you're gonna have just as many people upset, because again, I think their concern is the people being in their yard and potentially, they were extremely stressed out about the um block party being there.
I think a fence would be a grand idea, and I would be willing to pay for it, because that is a, expensive as it is, is a, is a, is 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 a like, you know what?
Yes.
It's a sit, they're, they're right up against a public park, it makes sense to put a fence there, so people know, hey, here you're in a public spot, here you're in someone else's backyard, stay out of their yard.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And it's just, that's fair. Yeah, oh, absolutely, and I think, yes, and 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 agree, and I, you know, and what's.
I'll also say, if the person then says, no, 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 I don't want the fence, just don't build the park, it's, we're going to build the park, do you want the fence?
I think, I think your other option too, if they like the view, and you want, and from the village aside, if you wanna prevent trespassing on the property, which I think is reasonable, then you put up a four foot high one.
Well, and I even said that, you know.
Yeah.
So that way, but that's a view still, and and it's, it, but clearly that's a demarcation.
Right. And I, and I, again, never promised anything, I said, you know, maybe we look at four foot, six foot, eight foot, you know, what, are you trying to block everything, or are you trying to block a little bit, maybe you like the view, so.
Yeah.
With, with razor wire?
There you go.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
But chain link, so that way you still have your view.
Wait, we make it a natural razor wire, we just plant roses on top?
Roses on top.
Natural.
So.
Okay, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna wanna plant raspberries, which are more of a native plant and have the feeding people, that's what, or the fence in my backyard growing up in Columbus was.
Perfect, perfect, let's, there you go. Oh my god, Bruder, you're killing me today.
Well, I grew up off of uh Kenyon Fisher, we had a double road with raspberries, it's uh our back fast.
Raspberries, they're.
Yeah, people don't cut through your backyard.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And you get raspberries.
Somebody took it upon themselves to go.
You mean your fingers?
Mm-hmm.
Wait, what happened?
Well, there were.
I don't know.
Little trees? Street trees or where?
I was under the impression of a street tree, somebody decided to cut limbs and stuff up.
By the basketball, that makes some sense.
Cool. So look around, I didn't tell them, give me pictures.
On the wood, the arms had tree people out yesterday, but I, but they were pulling stuff out of there.
Yeah.
There was, there was tree stuff blocking the traffic when I got home yesterday, but this was tree stuff that wasn't gonna be street trees, this was big tree stuff. This was, this was, you know.
I have not run.
We have the giant flatbed here.
Yeah, no, this was, um he basically said somebody apparently doesn't like our street tree, my understanding was, the way he described it, somebody didn't like our street trees over by the basketball court, and they decided to hack them up.
Could be a bored kid with a golf club, I know I did a lot of destructive stuff when I was young and dumb.
Camera is what we need.
All right, moving on, so that's for that, and we will read it, and we will, and we'll keep it a secret of how people are gonna vote. And no one wanted to chime in if they liked it or not, I think it's well aware that I like it, anyway.
And I think, again, we will have one more meeting, um for any logistics or anything like that, if anybody has concerns that they wanna make sure that gets added into the legislation or something along those lines, just let us know, and then we'll.
Can we put pickleball court by the pool on the radar for someone, cause that'd be a nice idea.
So I think we resurrect.
Kind of a whole separate sport, like, you know, like the ten or twelve different painted markings for different sports.
Yeah, I think that's nice.
I think a lot, there's been a lot of, and and there is still, and I, we would have to look at that, and I cannot remember exactly what the issue is, is next to the basketball court, that open, the open field there, and I'm not saying we destroy that, no, no.
We have a swell that goes down, and then if you walk over there, it it, the slope starts to go, and the basketball court is situated on these, most stable as part of that, and then it'll slip into that.
That's what I was wondering, okay. Really low. Okay. Right. Yeah, but. I thought there was a reason we, we weren't money with the shelter over there.
That's right.
Okay.
We can't put like a bocce ball court in there?
Yeah, but we're on the west side of. Anyway, just have like, you know, different markers painted different colors for different sports, is that kind of normal?
Something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I'm into that idea, it's just pink.
It depends on, yeah, it depends on how we do it, where you do it.
We've talked about doing, and we're, don't forget, we're doing the master plan for the pool, so that is something that we really need to talk about.
Yeah.
That's right. All right, so let's keep going, cause it's after eight o'clock and we're still in legislation. Uh twenty-three oh six, authorizing the mayor and fiscal officer to enter contract for the purchase of car video system, and, okay, this is the whole police thing we were talking about earlier. The whole big thing, the money had been appropriated, but it's gonna be more than fifty thousand, so we think we still need council approval, even though money for that is already in the budget. Um this is why we're having the extra meetings, we've already talked about it, moving on. Um twenty-three oh seven, resolution, mayor to enter into contract with Dynotech Inc. for surveying and easement preparation purpose for the Jordan Monroe Storm Sewer Project. This is the other one we already talked about, excuse me, uh getting the surveyors in, it's also why we're doing the extra meetings, so we can get that done, and maybe get some of this stuff done before the rains come in twenty twenty-four, cause it's not gonna be done before the rains come in twenty twenty-three. Um, cause that's only two and a half month, three months away.
Or today.
Yeah, and that's it.
And I don't think there's anything else, I do believe you guys got everything, if there is, I will make sure that we get it out as soon as possible, um and I will verify, so Ferguson's will be on there, the Dynotech will be on there, Chief's um video stuff will be on there, and then I will verify from Jeff if he wants the Franklin County, give us our money now, needs to be on there. But those other two pieces are not going to be on there, just, again, it's just, it's fair.
Please don't, no.
Um if someone can email KGT or reset his password, since he doesn't know it.
Do you wanna double check your computer hold first?
Well, I mean, I do, but if I have it at home and I can't get it here, I almost never check by, oh, actually, I'll.
They'll actually just reissue it and put it in an envelope, and we'll just give it to you.
Good.
Or the record.
That will be wonderful.
It's very archaic.
They, they have the ability to to do a one, a single use, and then it directs you to set your.
Okay.
They just choose not to implement that?
Yeah, for some reason, yeah, I, I literally pitched a big fit when.
I wish we set our own, I do too.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
I can't, because I set mine.
No, I, they're, they're crazy.
Hey, mine's all posted in my basement somewhere.
Oh, I lost mine.
I still have the pink post that that they gave me, because, um, okay, so does anybody have anything about anything we just talked about to start now?
Um do any other business people need to get off their trust right now?
No.
They're fair enough.
Jason, what all did Jason wanna talk about?
What Jason wanted to talk about was getting things on, so every time there's some sort of event, you already mentioned it, it needs to be um publicized prior to the um pool passes being sold, so everybody knows what days the pool is closed. So if you wanna have a kid's birthday party during operating hours or whatnot, it needs to be in before um we start selling pool passes.
If it's after hours, it's fine.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, but during like regular operating hours, including MPCA, that needs to be on the books prior.
During the basketball.
I will work on getting there.
Um I'm not necessarily against that, I don't see the, the, I don't understand the justification for it, though.
So if you're, the, the argument is, if I'm a member of the pool, and my membership tells me I have access to this, to this thing from noon to eight P M, Monday through Friday, or you know, whatever, and now all of a sudden I show up.
We're closing it for my wedding.
We're closing it for.
My kid's birthday party.
The MPCA pri- you know, it's, it's now no longer available to me for, like, I gotta pay to.
The advertised.
Yeah, can we put a little thing on the bottom of the, the pa- the pass?
Subject to special events.
Subject, pool availability, subject to special events, and move on?
Yeah, I, I feel like maybe there were some hard feelings.
There was definitely hard feelings.
Fair enough.
Some things that may or may not have gone down, and so this is an.
See, this is why I shouldn't be at pool meetings, cause I just go like, who cares, it's the pool, get over yourself, and and people, this is serious to them, just not to me.
Yeah, this, this is. Quell those concerns, while I'd agree with you that an asterisk subject to special events is probably sufficient.
Not just to the right.
And this, for one, yeah, let's.
Well, and it's, and here, I, 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 I will say this for the record, the concern is that you may have people that are requesting it to be closed, because i- i- it's not that expensive to do it, if you do it by the paperwork, so just to prove a point that some people may just request to do it, because they can. And then our pool would be closed many days, um if you have one person doing it here, one person.
Well, they have got time and, and, and money on their hands, more power to them, that's how they're gonna.
So that's.
That's right. It's me, I'm staying.
You know, I gotta spend two hundred dollars, why? Just to spite people, just, just cause I think it'd be funny.
Yeah. But the comment is, if you, the comment is, is if you get four people to put in two hundred dollars, you have the whole pool all day yourself.
Right.
So.
I mean, now that you're saying that, it's two hundred dollars, I have more than that in my pocket right now.
Well, if if you split it between the couples or whatever, that's, it's very, yeah.
I just, just, hey, this Saturday, two hours, uh what's it raining for, it's just me, what do you mean, I just don't like people.
Or, or we.
I don't like people saying without my shirt on, I just wanna, I want some private time in the pool.
You need to be a member of the pool to rent it, and you.
The wife's a member, I'll have her rent.
So, but the other part is, you know, the other part of discussion could be, is if you wanna rent it on a Saturday, maybe we set a Saturday set fee that's more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, of course we.
And maybe we don't allow people, so the other part that's very difficult, and this is what we came across, is, and if, this is in effect for pride week, or pride day, or any of the other events,
Yeah.
it is difficult to kick people out, so you have people that come in at noon, and all of a sudden they have to leave at three, three-thirty for an event that starts at four. It, it's very difficult for our pool staff to get them out, get the bathrooms cleaned, dried up, um and get the, you know, get it ready for whatever the event may be, and again, it could be for just MPCA, but they have found it difficult to get the people out, um and because people like to linger around, simple as that, it's not a bad thing, it's just, it's.
Yeah. Most of our, most of our events, I don't know why people couldn't just be there, MPCA Family Fun Night, the, I mean, yes, that means they're not paying their money.
And that's the.
I'm trying to collect their, because it is a fundraiser.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Uh, yeah, well, I think all this goes to the.
It'll be on the twenty-third, yeah.
Yeah.
Damn, we got out, was there anything else Jason was looking to?
That's all I got.
Okay, so the other part of Jason's that I got from him was, um and and I don't know how exactly we want to do this, but obviously with the maintenance shed and the amphitheater and multiple different projects, he just, you know, wants to make sure that we're dotting our I's, crossing our Ts, sometimes we'll do something, we'll talk about something, and then three months later we bring it back up again. So that has been an on, that's always been a thing, I mean, that's never not stopped, but maybe getting some type of working document, kinda like um Jen Pockins had a long time ago with like the,
Yeah. Yeah.
um we passed this legislation, you know, leaf bid in this month, this and this month, but maybe we do some sort of working document that says, okay,
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
every single work session, we're going to bring up these four projects, where are we with the storm sewer project on the back, where are we with the amphitheater, where are we with this?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Because sometimes they just get dropped on, we got a million things going on, I mean.
Yeah.
How do we deal with our Ts?
So, I mean, yeah, it's, it's however you guys wanna do it, I mean, Jason just wanted, Jason just wanted to make sure that he bring, you know, that we were talking about
I don't know how to do it.
I do.
maybe a little bit of structure when it comes to, and I don't know, I don't think the appropriate places in the meeting, I think to the.
So you're great, you're, that's, that's, you're the council organizer.
Yeah, I, I think it's more in the work session that.
Yeah, that had a, a very nice uh thing, that she'll, you know, it was always the major projects, what's it, what's it, and you just hit on that.
Puts it out. Puts it out. It's like a honey do list.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, it's a check-in, it's okay, like, are we, have we gotten anywhere on, let's just, let's make sure we mention it, and it might just be, we're waiting for the engineer report, okay, good.
Right. Right.
We got the engineer report, great, we got the engineer report, what do we, what's our next step?
Right. And it's just like we do with the, with the C C T Vs and all of that, Mike sends us a report and we do all that, so, but I think it's more about accountability, making sure that each work session that we come into,
Yeah.
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 these are our top five things, the lakes, the building, um Eric always gives us an update with the buildings, where are we with the amphitheater, where are we with, are we, are we looking into doing any type of, um where, uh, here's one that we haven't talked about in a month or two, and we're still in the same boat we've been in, um are, are cut through. So, you know, we, we always bring it up, we always talk about it, we get, you know, really excited because we think we might do this, I know that that may come in with the lakes, um when we do that, being able to do something there, but is it going to?
Yeah, pass, we're just gonna see that.
So again, it's, it's just a matter of where are we, is anybody working on it, do we have any thoughts, is there anything we can do?
Yeah.
The Dora was the other thing that he had brought up, again, is it something, you know, one of the things that they really wanted to work on, um that we do know, yeah, and.
Working process, we have, we have certain things we have to do.
So the next thing is, they want.
Various duties.
See, I see first, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Various duties.
I, I'm just going out there and saying, no matter how fun a Dora sounds, I don't think we need a Dora in my shape or form.
Well, the other question is, is, you know, there is.
There's no place to put it, there's no place that fits the statue.
And it's not a priority.
Oh, that is true, that is.
Yeah, I think it's not a priority right now.
It has to be a place that sells, we could chew on it.
But it's not really.
Well, they do.
It, it could be made to work, I will tell you that much, it's a matter of just establishing things and seeing if, the, the, the trick is, if it's, if it's something to council, and it's all for you folks to decide, we can get it to work, I'm fairly confident in that, and it's a matter of submission to liquid control, and then they're gonna make the final determination on whether or not they feel it fits with that.
Mm-hmm, ninety percent of ninety-five, oh yeah, it's, we'll move on, Dora, who cares, sorry.
And then the other thing that we were talking about is, you know, and this, you were part of, um having, and John was here,
Not worth talking about.
um starting out slowly with potentially selling alcohol on maybe special events, selected days, whether it be
Yeah.
Fridays from four to eight, or Saturdays from noon to four, um and what that's gonna look like, and John was okay with selecting.
I guess, he did not love the idea.
He did not love the idea, but was um teetering with, you know, okay, let's roll it out extremely slowly, does it work, does it not work, what potential problems do we have? Um but then, what do we need, what does that look like, what do we need to make that happen, okay, the pool opens now in six months, and do we need to do, and I don't know, I don't know if we just apply for like the licenses.
I can't, I can't, I can't believe I'm saying this, I, we don't need, we don't need alcohol in our family pool. I would, I would, I would, I would, I would just move, I would just say, we don't, we don't, we don't need alcohol for the family pool, we don't need to get in the business of selling alcohol.
So that's a council thing.
I need alcohol for my family.
And that's, and I think part of it is, we know.
Okay. Hold on, okay, ready?
Well, shh, I don't know that to be true or not.
Yeah.
I know it to be factual, because I have seen it.
Yeah.
And, but that's not, that's not enforcement and kicking people out, that's, that's that problem.
Well, that, that gets into a different policy, so if you don't wanna sell it, you don't wanna sell it, you don't necessarily need a, a license to.
Okay.
I think the whole point is to sell it and not, yeah.
Have it there as a private, yeah, and then that's right, and that's, that's one way to handle it, and and there's, you have different options. You can also have policy where there can be people are allowed to bring it, right, just like a picnic, cause it's a private, essentially it's a private, yeah, well, it's public, but it's your, under your control.
I think that was an absolute no interest in doing that, because we, we.
You can set policy.
Liability.
Yeah, I would not.
Because if people wanna sneak it in, it's under their, their auspice to keep it hidden, to keep it under control, if you say you can bring it,
Right.
there's nothing stopping a guy from sitting there with a twelve pack and drinking from ten A M till four P M.
Yeah.
Well, except, except that their behavior, right?
Their behavior then.
So then, so then you.
But that, then you're just guaranteed, you're going to have someone get out of control and unruly that you have to kick out every day.
They actually have to, they actually kicked people out this past year, for drinking, um an entire, I'm fully bottled, I don't wanna over speak, but, um he was talking about.
Yeah. Yeah.
What are you looking at this for?
Because he was getting me in, you're talking about, he didn't, he wasn't there, it wasn't him, um they were talking about, they were kicking, they kicked somebody out, um and John was telling the story when.
Yeah, poor David.
Yeah.
I think that if it were easy and it didn't take up so much of our time, I would be okay with it, but right now I think we should put it on the back burner, because we have more pressing issues that we need to deal with in a timely manner.
I don't remember if it's not. Right, and I think my question is, is what do we need to do even, cause I don't have the answer, if we wanna, if, if we want to sell alcohol four times throughout,
Yeah.
do we do, do we just have to do what MPCA does, or do we?
We, no, MPCA's license is a special license. No.
Yeah, cause they're a nonprofit.
Yeah.
What I would suggest, because we have plenty of them, is that you, A, A, we need to set up our C I C.
Yes.
Okay, B, B, if you have special events, you, you will. B, the, if you have special events, you you will.[1547.44]